Good evening. Welcome to the August 26th Revere City Council Meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call of the members: Counselor Agenzio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Harramio is absent, Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Nowoselski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Counselor President Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of July 22nd.
So moved.
Calendar item number three, the Revere City Council will unveil a plaque dedicated to the women who served, are serving, and will serve on the Revere City Council.
Madam Clerk.
Good evening, elected officials, former elected officials, and their families and the residents of the city of Revere. Today marks a significant day in the history of the United States of America. On August 26, 1920, the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution was certified by proclamation changing the face of the American electorate forever. The 19th Amendment granted women the right to vote. This right was achieved after decades of struggles, protests, marches, and so-called civil disobedience by the champions of voting rights for women. In 1973, the United States Congress designated August 26 as Women's Equality Day to commemorate the 19th Amendment. It is only fitting that a plaque commemorating the women of the Revere City Council be dedicated this evening to coincide with such an important milestone. If not for the women's suffrage movement, the passage of the 19th Amendment, we as women of the Revere City Council very well may not have had the opportunity to be in the positions that we are in today as elected officials or as department heads. To each of the remarkable women who have served, are serving, and will serve on the Revere City Council, your dedication, vision, and tireless work have profoundly shaped our community, fostering progress and inclusivity. You have championed vital causes from advocating for social justice to enhancing public services and have inspired future generations of women to engage in civic leadership. Today, we celebrate your contributions and build upon the legacy of your invaluable service. Today, we honor the following women. Margaret Peggy O'Hara. Councilwoman O'Hara was the first woman to serve on the Revere City Council. She was appointed at-large in 1973 by the City Council to replace her husband Edward L. O'Hara. She served through the remainder of 1973. Rita Singer. Councilwoman Singer is one of the first women elected to serve on the Revere City Council and the first woman to represent Ward 1. She is the longest-serving woman and was also elected Council Vice President in 1980. She served from 1976 to 1993. Vera Curcio. Councilwoman Curcio was one of the first women elected to serve in the Revere City Council and the first woman to represent Ward 3. She served from 1976 to 1981. Vera's daughters could not be present today, but I would like to acknowledge Joanne Curcio, Georgette De Giovanni, and Deborah Columbus who are watching from home. Catherine Penn. Councilwoman Penn was the first woman to represent Ward 2 and was the first woman president of the Revere City Council. She served from 1980 through 1986. Linda Santos Rosa. Councilwoman Rosa was the first woman elected to serve at-large. She was Council Vice President in 1990 and in 1993. Prior to her tenure, Linda served on the Revere School Committee from 1984 to 1987, and she served on the City Council from 1988 to 1993. Denise Solemy. Councilwoman Solemy was the first woman to represent Ward 6. Prior to her tenure, Denise was on the Revere School Committee from 1990 to 1995, and she served on the City Council from 1996 to 1999. Jessica A. Janino. Representative Janino was the first woman city councilor to be elected to the Massachusetts General Court, and that happened in 2020. During her tenure on the City Council, she served as Vice President in 2013 and President in 2016 and 18. Jessica served on the Council from 2012 through 2021. She could not be here today, so she has actually prepared a short video to share with everybody.
Hi, everyone. I'm State Representative Jessica Janino, and I'm honored to be here with you today in the Revere City Council chambers as we celebrate Women's Equality Day here in the city of Revere. What an honor it is to celebrate 104 years ago the passage of the 19th Amendment. When you think about that in context, it's pretty amazing to think about how far we've come, not only as a country but as a community. And as we stand in the City Council chambers today and acknowledge the contribution to women in the city of Revere and women in this chamber, it's pretty remarkable. Serving as a Revere City Councilor was truly one of the greatest honors of my life, and serving as City Council President was such an incredibly educational and rewarding experience for me that's taught me so much and given me so many tools that I've taken with me in this next chapter as your state representative. I have the distinction of being the only woman to serve as a Revere City Councilor and go on to serve in the great and general court, and that has truly been the greatest honor of my life to continue to serve the city of Revere in this capacity. When I think about all of the amazing women that have come before me, many of you are there today, the current women serving in the city of Revere, and our future leaders in the city of Revere, we have so many amazing, strong women that we are so, so lucky to have. And when I think about Massachusetts, to think about in the city of Revere that we're represented by a woman in your state rep, in your state senate, and so many of our constitutional offices, when only 104 years ago, women didn't have the right to vote, and only 50 years ago, women couldn't take out their own line of credit, we've come so far. So it's an honor to be here with you tonight. I'm so sorry I couldn't be with you celebrating in person. I'm representing the city in my official capacity as your representative, but it's truly, truly an honor. I'm so, so proud of all of the women that have come before me and that are there currently, and I cannot wait to see what the future generation of Revere female leaders accomplish.
Now for our current sitting female city councilors. Joanne McKenna, former educator of the Revere Public School System, was first elected to represent Ward 1 in 2015. She served as Vice President in 2018 and 2023, and President pro temp in '23. She has served on the City Council continuously since 2015, and at the end of this term will earn a place on the legislative bench. Angela Garino Sawaya. Councilwoman Garino Sawaya was the first woman elected to represent Ward 5, who began her inaugural term in office this year. And last but not least, Councilwoman Michelle Kelly began her inaugural term in office this year, representing the residents of our community at-large. Thank you all for your service, and without ado, we will unveil the plaque at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we do the unveiling, I'd like to open the floor to the City Council. Anybody wishing to say anything? Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've known a lot of the women from years ago that served on the Council when I was at the DPW, and they did an excellent job, and I worked very closely with them, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight. This really is an honor, and to my colleagues in the Council right now, excellent city councilors, and it's my honor to serve with them.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
What a great night. I've had the pleasure to serve and work with almost everyone of the women named in that on the Council for the last 35 years, and each one of them is special, each one of them that did a marvelous job, and it's long overdue, and it's about time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I am extremely happy with being one of the nominees for this, recipient, and as being the first Ward 5 woman counselor. I'm looking at Jessica Janino, who I've looked up to so much, and her being so much younger than I, and I keep telling her, I'm like, yep, I'm going to be just like you one day, and guess what, I'm up here. And then Rita Singer, oh my goodness, I've known her forever, as well as Denise Solemy, and I've looked up to both these women, and to be a part of this today is such an honor, and I love representing the people of Ward 5. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say this is well-deserved. I know many of you, Ms. Solemy, Ms. Penn, Ms. Singer, it's an honor to know you and to call you a friend and to learn from you, and it's also an honor to serve with Joanne, Counselor Sawaya, and Counselor Kelly, but I've always prided myself on being led by strong women, with my mother at the helm, and as the son, as the brother of two sisters, I've been very fortunate in my life to be surrounded by strong women, and that can only make us stronger, to have that type of voice and that type of leadership and that type of protective protection. And I just want to say thank you for blazing the trail, and thank you for all you guys did for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank everybody for this great honor, and thank you to all the strong women that served before me and led the way so this could happen tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. As well, I want to thank everyone for this honor. I had no idea that I would be sitting up here, and I'm honored to represent the residents of Revere. And in terms of the past female councilors and ward councilors, I have big shoes to fill, I feel. Everyone did such a wonderful job, and just thank you for leading the way for me to be able to be here and represent you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, being the senior member of the Council, I can say that I've worked with Rita Singer, I work with Denise Solemy, I work with Vera Curcio, and I'm proud to be working with these young ladies here, sitting beside me now. Really proud to have worked with them and be working with them, and as they say, behind every man is a great woman. Well, here we have, I think, 13 names up there that have served on the City Council and made this city a lot better than it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to all of you women, what an amazing night to be a part of, what amazing time to be on this Council, to get to honor you all. It's amazing the work you put in individually, but if you think of the legacy that the family names have left in the city that continues to give back to Revere today, it's pretty amazing. Honored to be here tonight, and thank you all so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's truly an honor to be serving on this City Council tonight, to honor these wonderful women who came before. I've watched them over the years, I know how hard they worked. It's really a special night here, and I'd be really remiss if I didn't mention that our city clerk, Ashley Melnick, put this whole thing together. But aside from doing this, we've come to expect Ashley Melnick to always be perfect because she is the best city clerk in the Commonwealth, but she's also the first woman city clerk in the city of Revere. So I know that she's much too humble to have mentioned her own name, and I'm her biggest fan, and I'm thrilled to have her as our city clerk, and I know that anybody that works up here knows that she's the best in the business. So thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. I also wanted to recognize, I know we saw a video of her tonight, but I also wanted to recognize Representative Janino, and you know, I've probably leaned on her the most the last couple of years when this, when running for political office was a decision that I was going over, but I just want to thank her for her friendship, for her loyalty, and for always putting Revere first. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk.
Counselors, please take your seat. Meeting will resume.
Onto public hearings, calendar item number four. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance providing for interpretation and translation services for public meetings and public documents.
This is a public hearing. We'll open the floor to proponents. Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Any opponents? Anyone not in favor? Good evening, ma'am. Name an address for the record, please.
Claire in Cirillo, Solicitor's Office, 281 Broadway, accompanied by Steve Morbido and Asma Abu Fuda from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Office. I am here, once again, as well as Steve and Asma, as an opponent, again, to the ordinance before you tonight. Through the council president, to you all, I want it to be clear that we do not oppose the intentions or the ideas behind the ordinance. However, we oppose the logistics of its content, as we have been for a few months. Most, if not all, of you were here when we presented previously, maybe in subcommittee or the full council, I don't remember, on the city's new language access plan that we adopted. And at the end of this year, we are really excited because city employees are going to be attending a regional Department of Housing and Urban Development event, because we've been asked to present the LAP to other municipalities in our region. And it is with this high praise that we ask the council to set aside the ordinance before you tonight. A dedicated group of city employees have been implementing the LAP since its adoption earlier this year, and we are making great progress in the collection and categorization of material from our various department heads. To recap, among many services, trainings, and initiatives, the LAP, when fully executed, will provide notices for availability of interpretation for public meetings and for small group interactions. An example of this is when we have a business owner come into the planning department to talk about a small business loan, which happens quite often. The city's offerings for interpretation will exist on a by-request basis once this initial collection phase has been completed. And for translation, for written, HUD guidance specifies a threshold of 5% of the population, or 1,000 people, whichever is less. This means that the city translates vital documents, at a minimum, into the languages encountered by 5% of the population, or 1,000 people, again, whichever is less. For all services, however, written or spoken, residents will be able to request their language with the city making our good faith effort to procure said language service. And there are detailed policies and procedures and timelines, which are outlined in the LAP, that city staff use to ensure meaningful access to services by all the folks who are living in our community. The ordinance before you tonight is well-intended. However, it sets unreachable standards that conflict with the LAP that we've been working on for so long. We crafted it for over a year with a HUD attorney, and it has been tirelessly rolled out this past summer. With budgetary and personnel limitations that we face as a city, we cannot afford to simultaneously interpret every single public meeting. And to give this council an idea, this past month of August alone held 21 public meetings, not including our appeals hearings through 40U and the parking department, and not including school committee meetings. And as you know, some of these meetings have one or no attendees at all. This contributes to why our LAP operates on a by-request basis for interpretation, to ensure that we are not wasting precious time, energy, or money in a needless manner. I will concede that there is some overlap between the city's LAP and the ordinance. If you are supportive of these ideas, you should definitely further read the languages in our LAP. It's publicly available, and I believe it's come before you as an official communication. I implore you to reach out to employees if you have specific questions. We stand on the opposing side tonight because of fundamental budgetary differences that exist between the two. A city the size of Lynn or Worcester may have the bandwidth to automatically offer these languages for all meetings and for all documents. But with a new high school on the horizon and the small group of employees that we have at City Hall, the proposal before you right now, with our size, is unattainable. I can assure you that the LAP holds all city employees, whether they're at 281 Broadway, or inspections, or parking, or the library. It holds us all to the highest standard of care and service for our diverse community, while also acknowledging the financial and procurement limits that a municipality has to work with. I urge this council to have faith in the employees who are working hard, under the guidance of a specialized HUD attorney, to carry out our LAP. It exists as an internal policy rather than an ordinance, just like our employee manual. It applies to our staff, and it applies to how we interact with residents. Each year, there will be revisions to keep the language up to date and to account for demographic changes. We are eagerly awaiting the newest American Community Service census updates, which will perhaps change what languages we have to offer. And again, I want to thank everyone for your consideration tonight.
Thank you very much. Are there any other opponents? Anyone not in favor? Closing that side of the hearing, this is going to be referred to Legislative Affairs. Do we have any city counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Claire, thanks so much for being here tonight. You know, when I worked at the senior center, Asma was incredible to work with. We used to translate our newsletters into four different languages, and the women that worked in HR, and I think it was Danielle, and I can't think of the other woman's name, but they were fantastic with the translations. My only concern with that was with, if we did look into doing every single notice that went up, I believe the city only had one language specialist. So I didn't want to overburden them, to some extent, you know. But can you talk a little bit about the LAP and how long that's been running and how successful that's been?
Counselor, this is going to go to Legislative Affairs after this, so I know we have other counselors. One second.
Just to clarify, it's already been to Legislative Affairs? Am I correct?
Twice.
Twice, yeah.
This, it was said to Legislative Affairs, this is the public hearing.
Prior.
It was worked on in committee prior, then it was reported out to be referred to a public hearing.
There was a public hearing earlier this year that I spoke against as well.
It's coming back to Legislative Affairs?
If it's already, if it has not been to a public hearing legally, we cannot vote on it right now. But if it has been to a public hearing already, we can. So the question is, has this been to a public hearing?
Yes. I was here as an opponent before for this ordinance.
I know this is a tough ask. You don't happen to have the date?
I can check.
Just so we can be clear, so none of us get sued.
Absolutely.
Very well, so we did, this was already at a public hearing, so Counselor Silvestri? Actually, I'm sorry, Counselor Haas, I apologize. Please ask your question.
No worries. Thank you. Claire, so I guess my point was, how long has the LAP been used currently?
So we adopted it, formal adoption internally, meeting approval with the mayor's office and all the relevant department heads, earlier this year. And at the beginning of this summer, once their workload kind of died down a bit into the legislative break that you all had, they began to start categorizing and cataloging every single document that each department had. You know, we're not going to prioritize a car wash flyer for a fundraiser, but all of those vital documents that offer services, whether it's monetary or city service such as a residential parking sticker, those things are at the top of the list, which is what Asma and Steve have begun collecting and categorizing. I believe they're making really good progress, because I've been kicking some department heads' butts to remind them that they got to answer these folks.
And just so we know, any resident that reaches out, who do they contact?
So we're gonna, yep. So right now, we haven't advertised it, because we're still in that initial Phase 1. But once that phase is completed, and we feel confident that we have all of the relevant pertinent documents that go out to our residents, there's going to be three to four bylines. We haven't fully decided, but we're going to have three to four bylines. All of those vital public notices that go out are going to say, in the language of the speaker, for interpretation/translation availability, please contact. And then it's going to have their office's contact information. They can also go through the city clerk's office. And that's going to be in the multiple languages at the bottom of each notice that goes out.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. And one second, Counselor Silvestri, you're next. I just, this ordinance has substantially changed since April. And because of that, it's my opinion that we should send it to Legislative Affairs one more time. It's almost not the same as it was presented, so. If there's no opposition, Counselor Silvestri? Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending regulations for short-term rentals in the city of Revere.
This is a public hearing, opening the floor to proponents. Anyone in favor? Good evening, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, counselors. Vincent Argenzio, Short-Term Rental Office, 249 R Broadway. I'm in favor of the proposed changes tonight. Of, as everyone is well aware, we are a new office. We've been in operation fully for about two years now. The ordinance was also new. At the time, it was written by Counselor Janino and Counselor McKenna. The ordinance has worked very well up until this point. Originally, when we had started, there were 1,200 short-term rentals operating within the city. We're down to about 100 now, so the ordinance, as the way it stands right now, has been very effective. It's just now, after some field application and seeing how it operates in the real world, we've come across a few situations that we would like to tighten up the ordinance in terms of enforcement action, so increasing fines, and also coming up with a strict procedure for determining primary residents within the city, which is a major portion of short-term rental operation within the city, is that you are the primary resident of the short-term rental that you are operating. So we feel as though that these few changes would help us really start enforcing the ordinance in terms of an action standpoint for noncompliant properties. There are only a handful in the city at any given time that are noncompliant, but these few small tweaks to the ordinance would help us really push us over the finish line, to really get us to where we think we need to be as a department for enforcement.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to the opponents. Anyone not in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Any city counselors wishing to speak? This will be referred to Counselor Novoselsky. This will be referred to Legislative Affairs.
Mr. President?
Counselor Argenzio.
I'm a little confused at the, this has already been to Legislative Affairs, and...
This is the first time there's a poll here.
Okay.
And then you can't vote on ordinance the same night it's been introduced, so you wouldn't be able to pull on it today.
So after we, it goes back to Legislative Affairs, we can vote on it that night?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called is ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install a new pole, number 15-50, on Railroad Street, beginning at a point approximately 10 feet south of the center line of Lee Burbank Highway, and continuing approximately 648 feet in a west direction in Revere, Mass.
Is there anyone here from National Grid? Oh, that's a surprise. All right. Good evening, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Petra Jekka. I'm representative of National Grid. I am also resident of Revere 55 School Street. So National Grid requires to install a single-owned pole 15-50 between pole 15 and 16 in Railroad Street. This petition also is linked with another petition as well, which is an underground, because they are linked. So if one of them doesn't pass, the other one will not pass. This is simply just for the record.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none. Any opponents? Didn't think so. Any city counselors? Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is in my ward. And we've had problems with National Grid working at night and disturbing the residents. And I just want to know if this is going to be done in the daytime. I know it's Lee Burbank Highway, and it's really not, you know, there's not too many residents on there. But I want to know, because if you guys come in front of me again and you want to work at night, it's not going to happen.
I will speak with them. Sorry. Scheduling determines what time is best for them. If it comes at daytime, they can do it at daytime. This all depends on how busy the road is. That's most of it. But if the city also has requests, we can also let scheduling know, and they will look at it as well and take that into it.
Okay, so the last time you guys worked, and you worked at night, no, I called the city to find out who was working, and the city wasn't even contacted. So I have a big problem with, first of all, communication, second of all, working at night, third of all, disturbing the residents that are trying to go to sleep to go to work the next day, and doing it because it's easier doing it at night because there's not enough traffic. We need to know, as a city, we need to know what you guys are doing. So if I call the city engineer, and he says, "I don't know what's going on. I don't even know who's working," we need to know. So you need to communicate. You guys need to do a better job in communicating on what you're going to do, when you're going to do it. And if you're going to do it at night, you got to tell the residents, too, that, I mean, the residents didn't even know. They were sending me pictures of the cars, the trucks, that were working there. I had no idea, and the engineer didn't know. So you, please, do a better job in communicating if you're doing work in the city. And if you're going to bother residents, I think that you should tell the residents that you're going to be working at 10 o'clock at night, and you're going to be jackhammering, you know, concrete and stuff, and you're going to keep them up. So, and they didn't even know either. So that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Makes sense.
Is this your first time here?
This is my first time here, so that's just, I just need to...
Mr. President?
So I don't have anybody's phone number, and if that's the case, I can just...
How long have you been in this position? Because I feel like we just met somebody else who was representing us. And if I may, I know this isn't your fault, but National Grid does not respect this city at all. They don't respect us either. So that needs to change. And I know it's not your fault. I feel bad. They threw you right into the fire. But they don't respect this city. They don't respect the people who represent the residents. So we need that to change. We've been promised things over and over again. We had you guys at the last meeting, nobody even showed up.
Oh.
So, again, I know you're super uncomfortable, and it's your first time here. My apologies. I know it's not your fault, but that needs to change. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Aside from him being thrown into the fire pit here, this looks like it's on Railroad Street, where there's no residents. And so if it's at nighttime, you know, perhaps we can approve this one. Start this new guy off on the right foot here, and he'll understand that he's got to communicate with us better. Your boss has got to communicate with us better, and you can bring that message back for us. But aside from that, I think that this is one that we probably can approve. We're not going to inconvenience any residents on Railroad Street, I don't believe, unless somebody's moved in there recently that I don't know about.
I think it just goes to the overall idea that we need to be shown more respect in this city.
Yeah, well, I think we've got that point across, yeah.
You know, I feel like we have the same conversation every time they're up here. Is the point getting across, Counselor? I don't know. We'll see.
Okay.
Counselor Novoselsky? Any other proponents? No, I'm sorry, just kidding. City counselors, any other city counselors? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number seven. Hearing called is ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install a line of underground electric conduits across Railroad Street. Grid to install a line of underground electric conduits across Railroad Street to existing manhole A29 from the property line of 30 Railroad Street towards existing conduits on Railroad Street, and install conduits from manhole 120 across Railroad Street to new pole 1550 in Revere, Mass.
Public hearing. Are there any proponents, sir?
So this is the petition that was linked with the pole. National Grid require, would want to install 20 feet of conduit across Railroad Street to the existing manhole 29, A29, sorry. It also wants to install 11 feet of conduit from the property line of 30 Railroad Street, which is in your map, would show more as 24 Railroad Street, just so I can confirm that, toward the existing conduits that are already on Railroad Street. And then it also wants to install 41 feet of conduit from manhole 120 across Railroad Street to the new pole 15-50, which is why they are linked.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none. Any opponents? People not in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Any city councillors? Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the spirit of getting along, can we hopefully approve this so we can complete this one project on Railroad Street? And then we'll start a new chapter, hopefully, and there'll be a lot more communication and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Novoselfski?
Thank you, Ms. President. Through you, sir. On, you're going underground from pole 1550 to the manhole. Are you gonna, there's a couple of active businesses down there.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that they're not effective about digging up, and they're still gonna have access on their property.
Yeah. No, I think that still will be, they will still have access to it. It's more just, this is more about National Grid, the substation area. That's why.
Right. Yeah. No, I understand that. And I understand the plan. So I just want to make sure that the businesses will love to have access.
I would expect that, because the area is pretty big, and they do have an open area where they can also park.
Thank you.
On the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number eight. Hearing called is ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install a handhole and meter pedestal configuration on the sidewalk at 36 Lee Burbank Highway.
Sir?
Yes. So this is basically, National Grid wants to install from the pole to 40 feet of the sidewalk. And then from there, there's gonna be either a handhole or a meter pedestal. And from that location, it will go across the street to the open area, to another, to either a handhole or a meter pedestal. That has still not been decided yet, which location would be which. And from there, it's gonna be inside to the road sign, the permanent road sign.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Any opponents? People not in favor? Closing that side. Any city councillors? Councillor Novoselfski?
Thank you, Ms. President. Once again, concerned about the businesses down there. And how, does this trench go across the driveway of the owners on the 36?
I would expect not, just because if that would go there, they would definitely have to contact with the business. They would have to get either an easement or another document from the business themselves to be able to work there as well.
And I want to make sure that when they dig up the sidewalk, they put a good sidewalk back. You know, because they have a habit of not doing a good job of replacing sidewalks.
Yeah. That might be kind of tricky, because the sidewalk already is open.
It's open?
It's open.
Yeah. Well, they still should, if they're digging underneath it, it won't be, they have to go deeper than what they have now. But also, too, they're gonna have to go across that jug handle. They're gonna have to close the jug handle when they do it.
It will probably be. Depending on how long that will take, because I don't know how long the, how long that will take them for them to trench across the road.
Yeah, because you have the oil trucks that go across the, take that a lot.
I know, because I take that as well.
It's gonna be very difficult for them to have them, but they have to make sure that they make it available to the businesses in the area.
Yep.
I know there's no neighbors in there that we have to worry about.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure that, again, that the businesses are taken care of.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number nine. Hearing called is ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install underground facilities on Nahat Avenue, beginning at a point approximately 130 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Nahat Ave and Shirley Ave, and continuing approximately 60 feet in a northwest direction to install underground secondary service for 13 Nahat Avenue.
Proponents, sir?
So National Grid would like to install underground secondary service for 13 Nahat, which would require trenching of approximately 60 feet from pole 2454 to the customer's meter of 30 Nahat Ave.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? People in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Opponents? Anyone not in favor? Don't see anyone for that. Any councillors? Councillor Novoselfski?
Thank you, Ms. President. Once again, this is in my ward, and I did meet with Nick Memolo and the team down there to decide the best route to take on this, because a lot of the poles have maximum amount of usage on them. So we had to pick the least amount of usage, and there will be a trench going across the street. And the other nine feet, the 60 feet, is across the sidewalk, going from the new pole into the building. So I have no problem with that. We agreed on that, and everybody feels comfortable with it. So I have no problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Hearing called is ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to constructing line of underground electric conduits from pole 3314 and crossing Centennial Avenue to energize the new customer at 124 Centennial Ave.
Proponents, sir?
Yep. So National Grid would like to install two 4-inch conduits from the pole directly across the street. Pole is 3314. And would like to be able to energize customer 124 Centennial Ave.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? People in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Opponents? Anyone not in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Councillor Novoselfski?
Thank you, Ms. President. Ms. President, this again is in my ward, and it's right down the street from my house. I know exactly what's going on. It's a brand-new building that's being built, and going from that pole over to where they wanted it, no problem at all, directly across the street. Just want to make sure that when they repave it, they pave it without a low trench.
I understand.
You know, because they have a habit of sinking, even though they do compression, and whether it's, it still sinks after a while. So we want to make sure it's in good shape. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered? Sir, do you have business cards? Yeah. Actually, if you could just write it down with the clerk, and she can send it to us. Thank you very much.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, the zoning subcommittee met at 5:00 this evening, and we had one item on, which was 24-216, was voted out favorably. I would ask for a roll call.
Madam Clerk, please call the, excuse me, ordered on a second reading?
Sorry.
Ordered on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance further amending the zoning map relative to 1330 Broadway and 931 Winthrop Avenue? Councillor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Garino-Sowaya?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Hara Mio is absent. Councillor Kelly?
Present.
Voting present. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Councillor President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. The zoning map amendment is engrossed and ordained. Next up is the appointment subcommittee report.
Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we had three reappointments and three appointments. And I would like to take, I'd like to vote all of them out favorably. Thank you.
Is there any objection to putting all together? Madam Clerk, if we could take a roll on all six of these simultaneously, please?
Shall the city council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairwoman McKenna? Councillor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Garino-Sowaya?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Hara Mio is absent. Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Councillor President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. The appointments have been confirmed.
The motion, item number 18, was withdrawn by the councillor who filed it.
Communications. Calendar item number 19. Communication from the Election Commission relative to the warrant for the September 3, 2024 state primary.
Good evening, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Paul Fahey, Election Commissioner, City Hall. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. As you know, our practice is a requirement that we approve the warrant for each election. You have in front of you the warrant for the upcoming state primary, which is a week from tomorrow. None of the polling locations have changed since the previous election, and we don't anticipate any change in November either. Happy to answer any questions about this.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 20. Communication from the Election Commissioner relative to detailed police officers for the September 3, 2024 state primary.
Mr. Fahey?
Mr. President, members of the council, as some of you know, the Votes Act requires the city council to approve the detailing of police officers. The chief and I are in agreement. We have a police officer at each polling location during the day, and we have 10 polling locations currently. So I will come back, well, actually, I think if you can vote on this for both elections, again, we don't anticipate any change. My only caveat would be to say, if anything comes up of any concern, that we felt required some additional police presence, we would share that with the council, obviously. At this point, we don't anticipate any changes in this election cycle.
Thank you, sir. Any councillors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Thank you.
Calendar item number 21. Communication from the city auditor relative to the public infrastructure gift fund relative to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Mr. Viskey?
Good evening, Council President Richard Viskey, CFO, 281 Broadway. Before you, we have a request to set up a public infrastructure gift fund under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. And this is to accept the donation made by Link Logistics for infrastructure repairs throughout the city. As you may know, all revenue to the city is considered general fund revenue unless otherwise dictated by Mass. General Law. This money has been donated for a specific purpose of infrastructure repairs, and as such, we are requesting an establishment of a gift fund to accept these dollars and spend them in accordance to the purpose. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any councillors have any questions? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 22. Communication from the city auditor relative to the Public Health Emergency Relief Fund.
Mr. Viskey?
Hello. Again, Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, CFO. Much like the previous order, this is, again, a request of the Chief of Health and Human Services on establishing a gift account for purposes of assisting in public emergencies. In particular, if there are fundraisers or donations made for such catastrophes as floods or hurricanes, tornadoes, et cetera, we will have a mechanism to accept those funds and spend them in accordance to the purpose of which this fund will be established. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you, sir. Any councillors? Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hey, Rich, thanks for being here. That's actually a great idea. A couple months ago, I had worked with the former Director of Emergency Preparedness and spoke to a few people about kickstarting something like this, where we would partner with maybe restaurants, hotels, and kind of kickstart the fund, which was more or less depleted at the time. But I'm thrilled that this is getting off the ground, and I look forward to seeing, hopefully, I can get a lot of donations in there that can help a lot of people in tough times. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 23. Communication from the city auditor relative to the opioid trust fund.
Mr. Viskey?
Good evening. Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, City CFO. As you have read in the letter, we have received a bunch of money from the opioid settlement cases, and this body had established a trust fund for those funds. In order to access those funds, we have to come before you for an appropriation. And what you see before you is to ask for $150,000 appropriation from that trust fund for the purposes listed in the letter. We do have Chief of Health and Human Services Lauren Buck here and some other members of SUDI to speak on this and further, but we are here to ask the appropriation for the purposes listed in the letter. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll have the chief come up and answer as such.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any councillors? All right. Seeing and hearing none. Shall the city council approve the FY 2025 opioid trust fund budget in the amount of $150,000? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 24. Communication from the city auditor relative to Revere TV's quarterly appropriation.
Mr. Viskey?
Thank you. You're probably very familiar with this quarterly request, but these are the funds that we receive through our agreements with the local cable companies that provide service to the citizens of Revere. This money needs to be appropriated by this body, and the quarterly amount for this period is $100,698.21.
Thank you, sir. Any councillors? Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $100,698.21 from the Cable Access Receipt Reserve Fund to pay for the Revere TV's quarterly invoice? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Mr. President?
Councillor?
Would you mind taking something out of order before Mr. Viskey leaves? Item number 26. There could be some questions for him, because he's the chairman of the retirement board.
Motion to suspend the rules. All in favor? All opposed? Madam Clerk, let's take up item 26, please.
Calendar item number 26. Communication from the Chief of Planning and Community Development relative to a proposed special act to support the family of Robert O'Brien.
Good evening, sir. Name an address for the record.
Good evening, councillors. Tom Skrowski, Chief of Planning and Community Development, 281 Broadway. The home rule petition that is in front of you tonight is regarding an unfortunate situation that transpired with Robert O'Brien, my predecessor, upstairs, his retirement benefits. So for those of you that had the pleasure of working with Bob, and those of you that didn't, he was both my predecessor, once removed upstairs, but also served as the Economic Development Director until the end of 2023, December 31, 2023, is when he officially stepped away. And unfortunately, shortly thereafter, he contracted an illness that was pretty quick and heavy in its onset, and passed away within a month of stepping away from the... of stepping away from the city. And what this home rule petition hopes to correct for is basically an issue where he had designated as a beneficiary his wife, who is also, you know, aging, and designated in particular that this would be a monthly contribution that would be distributed to her. And, you know, to make a long story short, the monthly contribution that would go to Bob's wife would not even be a step towards what he really earned in those retirement benefits over time. And I think, were it not for his very rapid and unfortunate passing, I think he would have gone for a disbursement of those retirement benefits. And, you know, I'm really acting here on behalf of his family and his wife, who've been petitioning the city and trying to work with them best we can. And, you know, Bob was a mentor to me. He was a great leader for the city. I think he helped usher forward a lot of really positive movement with the work that we're doing in community development and planning. And hopefully, this can go, you know, a short way towards showing the respect that him and his family deserve. So happy to take any questions. But I do think Rich probably is more of the subject matter expert here.
Thank you, sir. Any counselors? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes, I'd like Mr. Viskey, if he could, to maybe kind of explain what's happening.
Good evening, Counselors. Richard Viskey, as Chairman of the Revere Retirement Board, 14 Yeeman Street. Like Tom said, this is a complicated matter. For those of you who aren't familiar with the retirement system, we are an independent board that oversees the retirement pension funds for the city, as well as the Housing Authority and the 9/11 Call Center. We are, again, we follow Mass. General Law, Chapter 32. In this particular case, it's very unfortunate that Mr. O'Brien was still an active member, although he had retired. He had never withdrew his funds. But when he signed up to be part of the pension system, you have options to choose Option A, B, and C for the withdrawal of your pension. But there's also Option D, which is a survivor's benefit on your behalf if you happen to die while you're still an active member of the system. Mr. O'Brien did choose to be Option D and named his wife as the beneficiary of that. What should have probably happened was he should have withdrawn that application once he retired and took his accumulated withholdings with him, because he had the right to do so. He was not eligible for a pension. He had less than 10 years of service with the city. However, he never withdrew his Option D, and upon his passing, the Retirement Board really was bound by the Mass. General Law, and it says, "We must honor the Option D benefit for Mr. O'Brien." Unfortunately, because of his age and his spouse's age, the benefit was very meager, about $110 a month it would pay to his spouse until her death. Mr. O'Brien did have about $79,000 accumulated in that fund, which, of course, made a lot more sense for his spouse to withdraw that upon his passing. However, we, as a board, had no legal authority to actually do that. So after some emails back and forth with PARAC, the Oversight Agency, and emails back and forth with Mr. O'Brien's brother and attorney, we did let him know what his remedies could be. One of them would be to come before the council and ask for a home rule petition to seek those funds. I will let you know that this case is in front of the appellate Legislative Board of PARAC. We are waiting further opinion on that. But we do have opinions from PARAC on other matters similar to that, which make it pretty clear that it doesn't look like there would be a remedy to actually withdraw his Option D application, because he would be the only person that could do that. So we're kind of in a bind right now. We, as much as we may want to help a spouse change the benefit, we're just not allowed to by law. It's a pretty complicated case. I have about 28 pages of legal documents here. If it's something you want to put in committee, I can certainly invite our attorney to go over the details a little more. But we're kind of bound by the statute, and that's why we can't really do anything other than honor the Option D benefit that he picked, and we're not allowed to distribute those funds in no manner that Mrs. O'Brien would like to see them. So that's where we stand on this.
Thanks, Rich. Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Rich. Although an unfortunate situation and a sad loss to the city, have we ever done anything like this in the past?
I mean, not in my time here. I don't know that this would happen too often. I mean, it's a pretty unique situation. I don't think it would come up too often as far as a precedent setting. But again, it was just the way all these events turned out. Upon his retirement, he kind of was an active member of the, I mean, he wasn't active, but he was a member of the system until such time he withdrew his funds. And when he happened to pass, we just go by the options he picked and the Option D benefit. It doesn't say you may select it. It says you must. So we have to honor what he picked, and we're kind of caught in the middle of this. So like I said, we're prescribed by law to administer the retirement funds accordingly. We did run it up the, told them, pulled the PARAC. We did get a, they didn't give us a legal opinion, but they gave us a past opinion from a case in Lynn, which I have. And we have some emails from our attorney, and we also have some opinions from the attorney on basically saying how we're just, we have to act in accordance to the law, and there's no out for something like this. So one of the options was to ask for special legislation so that this board could then override the law and reward Mrs. O'Brien with his accumulated withholdings, which are all his dollars. So this wouldn't cost necessarily the system any money. It's almost like an unfortunate gain to the system, but all they look as far as the return to his money he put in, there'd be no annuity. But again, we don't have any legal authority to do that at the board. So I think that's why Tom had sent this up to the council for consideration by the council.
So you mentioned the cases in front of the PARAC Appeal Committee?
Yeah, the DALLA Board, we're waiting for them. It wasn't brought on by us. It was brought on by Mr. O'Brien's family to go to DALLA to appeal the decision that says that we have no authority to give him back his withholdings of his funds.
So I, would it be fair to ask that we wait for that decision before we present one? I think that's only fair to this council, putting us in an awkward situation. Although I loved Bob and the precedents he put to the, what he gave back to the city, I think it puts us in a bad situation and sets a precedent. Although you disagree, I would just hate to see many other people line up to take this option.
Yeah, I would abstain from saying what's fair and not. I'll leave that to the 11 counselors.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. And let me say at the outset, God rest his soul. Bob was a great guy. He was a friend of mine. However, this I see as absolute precedent setting. And I'd want to know, before I'd even consider it, how many people are, or how many spouses are getting monthly benefits, and what's to stop them from getting what's in there? I don't know any of that, but the bottom line is, I need an awful lot more information before I would even consider something like this. I think it's a, it was a nice gesture, but I've been here a long time, and I'm here to protect the taxpayer. And I've, I've had some pensions before me, and some, in fact, had special legislation that I was responsible for withdrawing for that very reason, because it opened us up to millions of dollars in potential liability by someone getting what we set a precedent for. And I'm not, I'm not here to do anything like that. So that's my position on this. I know we need a lot more information. It should probably go to committee, but I'm not going to dictate to the Council President what he does with it. But I'm certainly, I'm certainly not in any position to vote to send special legislation off on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo what Counselor Silvestri said. Although I had the utmost respect for Bob O'Brien, there's legal documents, documents there, and they were signed by him, and that's what he had chosen to do. I think we need to wait for that decision to come in, and then if it has to come back in front of the council, that's one thing. But I think this is going to set a dangerous precedent if we do decide on voting yes on this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. I agree with setting precedent. I think this is dangerous. Do we have a date for this court date that you might know? I know the appellate court's the highest, so it's not going anywhere.
I spoke to the board's attorney today and just to get an update for this meeting, and he expects maybe something in three to six months, so it won't be anything anytime soon. DALLA's bureaucratic nightmare, quite frankly, and we're at their mercy. So I certainly update the council when we get the opinion from them. But again, we're really just kind of the conduit to this. We just apply the law.
Understood. I mean, if the appeal goes through, then it takes us out of the equation. Is that correct?
Yeah, again, I think when someone deceases and they choose a beneficiary in a way, it doesn't make a lot of sense that someone could then just change someone's opinion. So I don't, I don't have a great outlook on what the decision's going to be, but I think it's fair to at least wait for that decision to act on it if that's what you choose. But again, I can have the attorney come in and give you a really better description of all the stuff. I do have some legal documents here. But I mean, long story short, there's nothing that says once someone chooses to suffer, have a benefit, and they pass away, someone can go in and then actually change that decision. So we're kind of bound by the decision.
Right. So if we create a home rule petition, like Counselor Zambudo said, it could open the door to everybody all of a sudden wanting to cash in at the same time. It could leave us without a high school. We also need a detailed financial analysis from the Retirement Board per city ordinance. So we can't vote on anything. We can't do anything tonight except put it into subcommittee or table it. I believe it's Section 2.12, 120, if anyone wants to look at it, specifically for voting on retirement home rule petition. So we would need a counselor to put a motion on the floor, to have the Retirement Board provide us with a detailed financial document before we did anything.
That motion, Mr. President?
Counselor Garino Sawaya, you second?
I second it. Thank you.
No second required. She was going to first it, so I was, you know. I guess we'll take a roll. You know what? We don't need a roll call. Well, we do need a motion in words. So, Madam Clerk, I don't know if you want to put something down? Actually, that's a great idea, to have the financial documents provide everyone who chose Option D. That way, we know what we're getting into if we do pass this home rule petition.
I'm okay with that.
All right. So once we have the motion down, we can vote on it. And then I would like to send this to Legislative Affairs or Ways and Means.
All right. How about that the City Council request a detailed financial analysis from the Retirement Board relative to a proposed special act to support the family of Robert O'Brien. The detailed financial analysis shall include all retirees who have chosen Option D.
Sounds good to me. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. My recommendation would be Ways and Means, since this is mainly financial. Any objection referred to Ways and Means? Back to regular order of business.
Calendar item number 25, a presentation by the Chief of Planning and Community Development, Jason Schreiber of StanTech, on the Broadway Corridor Parking Study.
Good evening, what's happening?
Sir?
Good evening, Counselors. Hopefully, I'm here this evening to talk about a less controversial topic this time, our Broadway parking study, that we have been... Oh, are we still there?
Yeah, it's glitchy. We're on a new one.
Sir, would you mind stating your name and address for the record as well?
Yes, Jason Schreiber, Senior Principal with StanTech, based out of our Boston office at 40 Water Street.
Thank you.
Third floor. Great. So we wanted to take some time today to talk about our Broadway parking study that we've been undertaking since February of last year. It's been an effort to really take on in tandem with our Broadway Master Plan, which will be coming to a close later this fall. It's really hard to talk about what we want to see on Broadway moving forward, setting a vision, and, you know, all of that good stuff without talking about parking, which is such a critical element that we heard throughout our public meetings. So we are joined tonight.
Is this, is this an accurate number? It's a 20-minute presentation?
Yes. Well, we'll start the timer now, and it's our anticipation that this would get referred to committee as well. I'm not sure which committee, but we could dig into the policy in a little bit more detail at that time, and we'll keep it to 20 minutes. We certainly know we've had a busy agenda this evening. So this is really a partnership between StanTech, our consultants, and the City of Revere, both my department, Community Development and Planning. I've got John Festa and Julie Demoro here from my department, and then Zach Babo from the Parking Department, who's really been innovative in helping us think about how to continuously upgrade and enhance our parking system here. So I'm going to hand it to Jason in a second to go through the basics here. But in overview, what this study shows is we do have enough parking on Broadway. It's really about how to make sure that our parking is most effectively and efficiently allocated, and that's really what this study looked at. So the presentation today, we'll be looking at the existing parking system, over, doing an overview of the inventory and the utilization, supply and demand, talk about what we've learned in the community outreach process, and then get to a set of draft recommendations. And just, again, briefly overview the schedule. We've got this in front of you all tonight, and hopefully, it'll get in front of a subcommittee, and then the council can sort of endorse it at a later moment. But the idea here will be to review all the work we've done to date, both with our stakeholder outreach, with our Broadway Master Plan public meeting, our survey, our parking system assessment, which is a supply and demand analysis we did both in weekday hours in March and weekend hours in May, and then looked at our activity evaluation models, created a parking demand model looking towards the future, set some strategies together that are all part of the Master Plan recommendations you'll see tonight. So in terms of what the goals were, in short, to fix our existing deficiencies in the system, looking at our current use and our management strategies, improving the effectiveness and efficiency of the system by looking at how our existing permits, regulations, and policies work, looking at modernization opportunities for our parking enforcement, and analyzing pricing and utilization to implement performance pricing. So we're really pricing our parking to get to peak level demand. And then ultimately, again, supporting the development of our Master Plan's goals. So if we want to think about Broadway in the future, we need to consider and understand how parking will fit into all of that. So this study does all of that in a nutshell. Again, we'll close with those strategies, and happy to hear your feedback here and in subcommittees. And I'll hand it over to Jason. Thanks, Tom. And before we get, I just wanted to briefly thank both Tom, but also his team, John, Julie, and of course, Zach in parking. Just so you know, we're only here because they all put in an application that was awarded, a good application, to the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, which is a program within the Executive Office of Economic Development of the State. It is a no strings attached, 100% technical assistance. And while we have a limited budget and what we can do, the help of that team has really made this a lot better than we might normally expect. So I want to just commend them for all of what they put into this. There's a lot of great information. I'm going to have my colleague, Katrina Meyer, walk you really fast through the data, and then I'll come back and discuss with you the recommendations out of that work.
Hi, good evening. Katrina Meyer with StanTech, 40 Water Street, Boston. So our first step for the parking, for any parking study we do is to draw a boundary for, around our study area, and we typically look beyond, you know, what you might consider as Main Street, or in this case, Broadway. The boundary extends along all of the streets that intersect with Broadway, so we can take a more complete look at the parking system, both including on-street parking as well as off-street parking lots, and public parking as well as private parking, to think of the system as a whole. So lots of parking spaces inside of that boundary, which is showed on this map, about 2,400. boundary, which is showed on this map, about 2,400. Here are some pie charts just showing what that supply looks like. A lot of it, in terms of the off-street parking, falls into that category of private parking, meaning this parking is for people who are going to the CBS, not for anybody who is going to Broadway. So that's a large swath of the inventory. On-street parking, there are many public parking meters on the street, about 177, but there's also lots of those side streets, which are more permit-based parking. So our next major step is to, like Tom said, look at the demand, what we call the utilization. So we went out there four different time periods over the course of a day on a weekday, and collected for each parking street, for each parking lot, how many vehicles were parked. What you're seeing on the map is that data represented as a percentage. So, green is kind of right there in the middle of our color scale, representing 80 to 90%, because that's the optimal. We don't want things to be on 100, then you can't find a space. But we also don't want things being empty. That's a downtown Broadway resource that's being underutilized. So, green is that optimal color. And if I flip throughout the day, you can see how this changes. So, starting in the morning at 10:00 a.m., this is still 10:00 a.m., but we're circling two of the kind of hotspots. There's the core area that covers both the Central Ave Lot and City Hall. And then there's that area on North Broadway, which also sees some higher utilization at different points throughout the day. Of the four periods we looked at, 10, 1, 4, and 7, 1 is the busiest time of day for the overall Broadway system. At that time of day, the core area is at 61%, so getting close to a pretty optimal utilization. I won't read all those numbers out in total detail, but our overall takeaways from this very robust data collection is that if you look at on-street meters only, you're never exceeding 50% utilized. So there's always churn in the system. There is always some availability across Broadway. However, in the core, some of those areas closest to the most attractive destinations are a little bit more full. If we look at all of the public parking, we're never exceeding 57%. So that's when you add in the off-street public parking options, as well as the on-street meters. We did take a look at this data on the weekend as well. This is just showing the busiest period on a weekend day, which is the evening. But overall, it's lower than the weekday. Finally, Tom mentioned we did some community outreach. All of this was done in conjunction with the Broadway Master Planning effort. They held a public meeting on April 1st, which we were in attendance at, so we got to learn about some of the community priorities related to parking, including things that might not be directly related to parking but could be, such as desire for more green space, and desires related to traffic and access. We also added a few questions to the Broadway Master Plan survey that were parking-specific, which I'll share here briefly. We asked about the length of stay and frequency of visit. So, as you might imagine, folks that are coming on a daily basis are staying a little bit longer. But you do have the majority for all types of visitors who are coming are staying just about 30 minutes or 30 to an hour. We're asking folks where do they commonly park? Most folks, when they come to Broadway, about 44% are looking for on-street parking, which is no surprise. That is the most convenient. However, there's more availability in the off-street parking lots. So that's something that Jason will talk a little bit about in the recommendations. We are seeing that folks are having trouble finding parking. When asked, how long does it take to find parking, the most common answer is about five-ish minutes. So, people are saying, I need to devote a little extra time to this. And then overall, this was not a transportation-related question specifically, but transportation is what rose to the top. While traveling on Broadway, what are your concerns? And so, traffic, parking, those are among the top three. And now I'll turn it over to Jason to talk recommendations.
Thanks. So, you'll see in those survey results, and in general, there's a lot of churn in the system. There's a lot of opportunity to make things work a little bit more efficiently. And I'll walk you through 11 recommendations that attempt to do just that. But ultimately, you need to remember that what you see and you perceive on the street sometimes is just what is in front of you. In the data, when we collect such a large geography, you'll often see that just around the corner, there might be available parking, or that the regulation is different. And one of our goals is to try to make that more consistent for people. As you saw, when folks say traffic congestion is a bigger problem than finding parking, it may often be because the churn in the system is something that is more or less getting in their way, and we're trying to make things simpler for them. Our recommendations match those three goals that Tom walked you through earlier, with, again, the idea of being able to first kind of fix things that don't work so well now, think then towards the future, and make things work better. And then lastly, support overall goals, not just specifically the Master Plan, but of course, its broader goals of economic development. One of the simplest things that can be done is already underway. You have a wayfinding plan that's been worked on. We have a few recommendations for tweaks on this, but this is there to get people to know that, hey, there are some spaces available in the Central Ave Lot. Your current wayfinding plan for that, and maybe for the City Hall Lot and other locations where we're seeing more availability, is static signs. But in the long term, many places have very economically been able to add in information like that electronic sign, so somebody knows for sure that if they bother to turn up the street to the lot that's a little further away, they'll actually find a parking space. And in order to then come back from that parking lot, feeling better about access is important. We have an example here of the alley on Osala Court that might be able to be improved to the Central Ave Lot. But it's true, along any public sidewalk, where somebody isn't going to be right on Broadway, they could park just a 30-second walk behind it. But if the sidewalk walk isn't comfortable, if it isn't well-lit, or maybe if there needs to be street trees or other improvements, that's really an important part of the parking system, is how is that walk? We also know that there's some needs to make some of the regulations that you have work a little bit better. Zach and his team over the years have really responded well to demand, and we've got a lot of best practices about trying to make things even more efficient. And one of the opportunities is right out back. The City Hall Lot can serve so many more users, but we simply want to integrate a little bit more of a nuance on your current regulations, where there's some folks who have privilege and some folks who feel like they can't park there, and to blend that more as a pool of parking, that people may have to pay for it certain times of day, not at other times of day. But if you're somebody who's here regularly at the City Hall, you have a permit, and you don't necessarily have to pay. You're just paying for your annual or monthly permit. And that type of approach works really well. Also, getting rid of the time limits that scare people away if they want to do City Hall business, or if they want to park even longer than the time limits out on Broadway might allow them to do, we want to see getting rid of that. It's also important for the lots around, I'm sorry, the streets surrounding City Hall, to think about that as a pool. So literally, the streets behind us and surrounding here could become part of that, and it really increases the nearby supply. And we're actually in a pretty strong pressure point within the overall parking system. You happen to also have something very unique that not a lot of communities have, which is a parking benefit district fund, where a certain surplus of parking revenues has gone into a separate account that can be used for improvements. It's not huge, but there's a few tens of thousands of dollars there. And we recognize that over time, that will grow, particularly with some later recommendations I'll talk about. Specifically, a parking benefit district is a way to pay for that wayfinding, to pay for that sidewalk improvement we were just talking about, to pay for things that improve that overall district. It does not need to be spent on parking alone. It recognizes, under state law, that parking is just one thing that's supported by a number of elements of the public realm to make it work better for downtown businesses and downtown economy, and so that money can be used more broadly. But importantly, it could have a lot more money in it if you were to update your pricing. Our recommendation is normally not to tell a community a specific price, but you see specific prices that are suggested here. What we usually tell legislative bodies is give your parking department the authority to work instead towards a target. In this case, the target of never having a block or a parking lot that exceeds 85% utilization is a good target. They would report back to you regularly and say, we changed the price to make this work. At the basic bare level, we think that if you were to take under this decision yourselves, the kind of pricing through your control, something like what you see on screen, is to say, there is a core area on Broadway that should be a little bit higher. There's a lot of demand there. But not that far away from it, you keep the current price of a dollar. And most importantly, your side streets, for even just a few spaces on your side streets, where suddenly the regulations go away, they switch to residential, but you'll see in the middle of the day, they're not utilized because there's businesses nearby, they could be priced an even more cheaply. And that's really what we talk about with performance pricing, is to let somebody know through wayfinding, there's a cheap opportunity. And there's actually several zones here where we recommend pulling the meters out. As you saw earlier from Katrina's chart, they're never more than 50% full. We want to be able to use your system a little bit more smartly, with a little bit more opportunity. I'm going to skip ahead to Recommendation 11. I'll come back to the others in a second. But this is the one that talks about leveraging your system for economic development and future opportunities. Right now, today, with that 50% or so of your overall system at peak still being empty, it means something important. That little chart shows the four bars of the four times of day that we counted, including the peak utilization in the middle of the day. But the colored charts show all the activity of all the businesses in your downtown. We've created a shared parking model from 6:00 a.m. until 12:00 midnight is what it's showing there. And you can see that curve and all the different uses throughout the day suddenly start to become active in the morning and at lunch and what have you. That's how we model the future. But you see the lines above that. Your parking supply, again, is 40-plus percent bigger than that demand. And when you actually look at what could happen, we just tested adding 1,000 units in downtown Revere. It's just a test. I'm not telling you that's what you need to do. But your system could technically handle that much residential growth. However, it would require that you're doing something a lot better and smarter with all of that spare supply, and that's sharing it. And so, right now, everybody has their lots, and everybody is not seeing them fully occupied, and there's sort of a, this is mine. And if you actually start to work with landowners and say, this is yours, but your taxes are going to go up, and we have to build a garage, you're going to have a huge opportunity if we can instead help you make your parking lot better. We'll lease it from you. We'll improve it. But now we can park a few more people on it. This principle, this is an example from West Concord, where the town of Concord, let them just split up all, I'm sorry, let them unify all those individual parking lots that were out back, and created a public parking resource for their downtown. But more importantly, it increased the parking supply, because instead of parking on each and every fenced-in lot, they're able to share their parking. This happens today in Revere. It is happening right now. This is just one example of the Citizens Bank, where they have a relationship with the doctor's offices nearby. It happens regularly in downtown. Somebody parks once to go to their work, but then walks across the street for coffee. They eliminated the required parking for the coffee spot. So what you want to do is an opportunity like this, for instance. This is just one we picked, and we said, look, all of those parking lots in that triangle between Park and Foster on the west side of Broadway, if you combine them, you treat it as a shared resource, I know it can increase the parking supply there 50%, and it might become a community resource. These businesses might actually get more income out of it, but you can then satisfy broader parking demand and long-term growth, and in a friendly way. We recommend that enforcement goes more towards an ambassadorial approach. This example in Pittsfield, Mass., they literally have high school students going out and helping people know that you can park in the Central Ave Lot. You can park a little further away. Guess what? There's places where it's free. There's other enforcement technologies we recommend that would make Zach's teams work a lot better. License plate recognition allows them to enforce a lot more quickly. It starts with a car. It eventually becomes a handheld. And there's now technologies out there that can go on the ground and do that in an automated fashion that have been tested in a few area communities. There's a future for making this work a lot better. And in particular, where some of those solutions might help is where you have a lot of problems on Broadway, is with loading. Businesses want deliveries, and there's a lot of conflicts out front, because it's all meters that might be filled up. A program that actually makes a rational amount of loading zones going in, oftentimes at the ends of blocks, can really help relieve a lot of the double parking pressure. It can also help rationalize things. We now have TNCs and Uber Eats, and they all need to get in. And a lot of that churn and traffic congestion people were worried about is actually just a loading zone problem. And similarly, you have this with your wonderful bus lane that activates in the morning only, that runs folks into downtown. We want to be able to have that bus lane's businesses instead trying to block it, loading right around the corner on Foster. The only other thing I'll say, and then I'll conclude for you, if we are able to manage your curbs better, and we're able to make loading zones work and pricing work better, then you might be able to do what some of the folks of the Master Plan want, more open space, more dining outdoors activities. And many, many communities in the region have created these parklets. They just take over a parking space or two. It's great outdoor dining. You can put in some landscaping, but you can't do it until you can better give people a reliable alternative for somewhere else to park. So that's our recommendations, 11 of them succinct. We hope you read the report. Happy to answer any questions. And I'll turn it back to Tom if he has any final thoughts.
Thank you, Counselors. Counselor Agenzio?
Thank you, Mr. President. On several occasions, you stated that we're only using about 40 or 50% of our current inventory. Is that correct? So, why this rush to increase the amount of spaces beyond what we have now? We're only using 40, 50, 60% of what we have now. Is this in anticipation of residential development?
So, the model that you looked at was just a model-to-model, what could potentially happen in the future with our existing system today. It wasn't discussing adding any new parking anywhere, but just our existing supply, both private and public. But yeah, nothing in this plan looked at creating a parking structure or anything like that, any additional parking, just working with what we have.
Okay. And the pricing structure, from a business standpoint, you think increasing the cost of parking would be behooves?
Yeah. So, when you really begin to think about where the cost of parking is, at a dollar an hour, for instance, for a few quarters, it has become increasingly just a very small fraction of what the expenditure is, A. But B, just in this region alone, many, many communities are far above $1.50 an hour, and $2.00 in places over $3.00 and $4.00 an hour. It's not to say to somebody, you have to pay this much to park here. It's to say to somebody, if you really need to get in here, we don't want you to stay that long. There's more of a price to pay here, but over there, it's a lot cheaper. And what it does is it helps your parking enforcement get out of the time limit world as well, because that's really hard to enforce. And a time limit, even if you've paid the meter, even if you're charging more, you get a time limit ticket, it's the worst thing ever. It's like, say, get out of town. We don't want you anymore. So those changes work hand in hand.
Thank you. I know Counselor McKenna and I, we had met with some business owner, and they had suggested and hoped for programming the meters. So Uber Eats, you're going to use the ATM, you're going in to pick-up-take-out, that there'd be a button on the meter that could give you 15 minutes free parking. So that would help move these people in or out, and not have them be, because it's even happened to me. What's your opinion on something like that?
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend it yet, because you do need a technology change to do that. But Concord, I just mentioned them, has that button, and it gives somebody a quick amount of time.
Our meter's capable of being programmed to that?
Not as they are now. You'd need new equipment to be able to do that. So that would be a bit of an investment. We didn't get into the weeds of exactly what that would cost you. What I would say, though, is ultimately, you can do it with almost any equipment if you just say so, as long as you have the right enforcement in place. And that allows enforcement to know that you stayed longer than 15 minutes, and you should start paying. But I will say, it is something you can integrate quickly on the back end of things. If somebody's willing to pay, you can give them that 15-minute free discount right up front as well.
Thank you.
And Zach just mentioned it's about $60,000 to upgrade our existing system to allow for that utilization. And I think it does lend itself, again, we're not just talking about increasing pricing, but decreasing in certain areas, like the Central Ave Lot is completely underutilized. So ideally, we want to get more long-term parkers in Central Ave, so then we can have those more short-term parking and more churn opportunities along Broadway where businesses need it constantly.
And I think that speaks to your wayfinding. I don't think anyone really even knows Central Parking Lot exists, so.
I agree.
I do agree that that should be utilized more. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. This will be referred to Economic Development Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 27, communication from the Chief of Planning and Community Development relative to Title IX amendments which would permit recreational marijuana establishments in the City of Revere.
Mr. Skoroski.
Good evening, once again. So, this is my last communication tonight, I promise. And it is connected to conversations that started in Economic Development Subcommittee.
And it is connected to conversations that started in Economic Development Subcommittee earlier in the summer related to recreational cannabis. What we submitted to you, along with a memo, was related to Title IX, which essentially introduces a prohibition on social consumption, you know, so cannabis cannot be consumed within a shop, but also releases the prohibition on recreational retail use in the city. And that is 9.18. It repeals that section. We already have the local option tax was adopted in 2018. Subsequently to this, there was a submission of the Title 17, the zoning changes by Counselor Silvestri. And this is really in consultation with our office and the city solicitor's office. And just to note, and hopefully it was clear in the memo, but just to be clear to all of you tonight, that was intended to be a starting point of a discussion on how things will evolve in the city with regard to recreational cannabis. That includes the location of where these places will be, how many licenses you would allow for. We set it at three, which is 20% of the package store licenses, so that's sort of a statutory minimum. And then there's also an open question, which was mentioned in Subcommittee, as to the social equity licenses and whether or not there would be sort of an earmark, so to speak, for that particular kind of license. So, again, it was a starting point. Look forward to this continued conversation with the council.
Thank you. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Tom, thank you for your input on this. I do think that it's time that we take this leap here in Revere. I think that we're missing out on a ton of revenue. It's actually $1.7 billion Massachusetts brought in. It was record for the state, also record sales in Rhode Island, Connecticut. And if done right, which I think in taking the time that we have to get this right and putting what we are forward, I think we can benefit from the cannabis market as well. And it's a time that people are looking for creative ways to bring in tax revenue. And a few thousand here, a couple million there, we shouldn't be turning away. So I'm in favor of this, and hopefully we can move forward with it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Hi, Tom. So we spoke earlier today, but I just wanted to reiterate my concerns that I have with this. And my main concern is that we have some very unique zoning districts in the city where we have HB and GB zones that exist, but many of these commercial zones directly abut residential neighborhoods. So because of this, I believe these zones should not be treated as typical GB and HB zones, but should be handled with some extra care and caution and foresight, especially in this situation. Because of these uniquely zoned areas, at the very least, I'm requesting that all the designated locations on the southern side of Squire Road, which abuts the residential neighborhood, mentioned in a couple of sections that I have in the ordinance, be omitted completely. And in addition, I'd like to see the 300-feet buffer zone that is also reflected in the ordinance be a discussion around that, where it may be increased to 450 feet. And lastly, there is a subsection that I'd like to see deleted in its entirety, but again, we can get into more detail. And then the other concern that I have is, and I know you said you were going to probably get this for me at the public hearing, but just the abut notification process that would be applicable for these recreational marijuana facilities, I would like to know if it is the same requirements and criteria that is set forth under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, or if it's something that requires more notification in terms of increasing the 300 feet maybe to a larger, to 400 or 500 feet, and also requiring certified mail.
I'll make sure to have that ready for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Counselor Silvestri. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway. And just for some clarification, I spoke with both Counselor Kelly and Counselor Janino this afternoon, and they let me know just what Counselor Kelly has stated. And I then talked with Tom, and we were going to change the Squire Road parcel from where it says from Stevens down, we will start at that Patriots Parkway and then stop it just before the Pine River Fish Store. I think that fits more of a area where less housing and more businesses in a better area for the people of Revere.
And just for clarification for the public, there are, it's not just about that area. There are a lot of details that go into being able to open an establishment, campinaire school, a church, things like that. So just for the public to know. But any other councilors? This is going to go to a public hearing on September 23rd. Okay?
To motions, calendar item number 28, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the mayor approve a traffic study for Adams Street in regards to potentially changing it to a one-way street. This area has many issues with vehicles.
Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. Just the traffic study in general, the one-way was one part of this, having a lot of issues with vehicles that have, between that Coolidge Street and Adams Street area is a very wide intersection. We have a lot of people taking turns without stopping, so I would like to have a traffic study done in that area. Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 29, motion presented by Counselor Nowosowski that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to authorize parking on Beach Street between Kimball Ave and North Shore Road. The MBTA has removed the 411 bus stop on the north side of Beach Street.
Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm trying to increase parking for our neighbors down in that area where the MBTA eliminated the bus stop. It created maybe about four or five parking spaces. And I know it's difficult down there, and I just want the traffic to establish a proper timing and no parking here, the corner signs and street sweeping signs and make things better for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 30, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the mayor request the police department or the appropriate department to conduct a traffic, safety, and/or feasibility study for the purpose of combating constant moving violations on the streets surrounding Revere High School, including but not limited to East Mountain Avenue, Cary Avenue, School Street, and True Street.
Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. Before we open it to the public, sir, I just want to say that they have begun doing upgrades on East Mountain Ave. We finally got some crosswalks. We have some speed monitoring signs. They have moving stop signs around so that drivers can more easily see, but that is just one area. We do have Mr. Cattarelli here from McClure Street. And so I guess I just stated your name and address.
That's fine. So go ahead. Joseph Cattarelli, McClure Street. As we all know, School Street, school is going to begin pretty soon. I use School Street frequently, being a resident. And at the very end of School Street by Broadway, we have two lanes, left only and right only. But the arrows on the street show two arrows, one straight ahead and one left. And I would like to see that changed to just a left arrow and even possibly say, "Left turn only on the street," because people don't look at the signs on the sidewalk. They see that straight arrow, and I can't tell you how many times I've been cut off being in the right lane trying to go onto Broadway by our own city employees, police, public safety, public schools, housing department. So if it's confusing to our own city employees, it's confusing to everybody that uses that street, so that'd be great. I appreciate that.
Just so you know, there is a motion in for the next Traffic Commission meeting to rectify that.
Appreciate that very much.
And I thank you for the picture because I didn't realize that both of those arrows do point at Broadway.
Yeah.
So thank you for coming.
It's something that I see every day, and I get cut off every day, basically, but appreciate it.
Thank you for waiting patiently, Mr. Cattarelli. Appreciate it. Any other councilors on the motion? Oh, Counselor Zambudam?
Yeah, I can just verify that I get cut off by, you know, at least a dozen times a week because I use that street all the time. So he's completely correct. It needs to be corrected. It's a simple correction, it's not a big deal.
I can't imagine the Traffic Commission's going to deny this one, so.
I'll be up there with you to testify.
Thank you, sir. Oh. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 31, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor be requested, I'm sorry, that the mayor request the appropriate departments to use a less invasive rodent poisoning when baiting. Data shows that the wildlife food chain is being affected and are killing off hawks, coyotes, owls, dogs, et cetera, from this lethal poison. A less invasive poison would help protect the wildlife and would be of equal cost compared to the current rodent poison.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion was brought up two years ago and passed by the council, but it doesn't seem like we're implementing a less invasive poison. I had just spoken to Belle Isle Ranger down in Belle Isle Mosh, and he said he's finding dead carcasses of owls, hawks, cats, et cetera. So I don't know if people know this, and I know we have a problem with rats because we have a lot of construction going on, and as soon as you open up the roads, I mean, I had mice, and I've never had mice before. But I don't know if people understand the trauma that these animals go through. A rat eats this poison, it doesn't die for three days, it dehydrates. So it's out, in, out and about, trying to find water, and an owl comes down and picks the rat up and eats him. Now the owl is poisoned, and it goes on, and it goes on, and it goes on, and it goes on. And there are lesser, less invasive poisons that will kill a rat. A rat will keep on going back to the poison and eat it, and he won't be out there, and he dies. So there are alternatives. There's dry ice, there's a second, a generation poison that we can use, but it doesn't seem like the city is using what they were asked to do two years ago. So I'm just asking, I don't know who I talk to about this, what agency or what department I talk to, but I really do think that we really need to get on the bandwagon here because we're, we are but a mosh that has a zillion animals, and they're all dying. I had two hawks in my tree every year, two hawks in my tree every year, and they were there for four months, and they're gone. They're gone. So I just, you know, I know I'm, you know, people might think I'm nuts, but, and I know rats are a poison, but a problem, but I really do think that we need to consider what the chain, the wildlife chain. So I'm asking this council to pass this, so just, and I'll talk to people and see if we can come up with a better alternative, but I'm just asking this to be passed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. I just want to say that we're having the exact same issue in the Immaculate Conception area. I've been getting calls from Elm Street, Bixby Street. They're finding dead squirrels, dead birds. We even unfortunately had a dog eat a rat that was poisoned, and the dog passed away, which breaks my heart because I have two dogs. In that area alone, there must be 30 or 40 dogs in that area. So I couldn't agree more. I'm willing to do whatever we have to get this issue solved.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I don't know if they still use Rodenticide to dehydrate the rodents. That comes with instructions, especially for residential, you're supposed, you know, but I agree with this motion.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Garino-Sawaya.
I also agree with this motion. In the Point of Pines, we're finding all kinds of dead rabbits constantly, and I know it's from getting second-hand with the poison that's put in the rat traps. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 32, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor be requested to reinstate the Adopt an Island program, wherein companies and businesses pay to maintain neglected islands or green spaces, and the city will in turn provide a sign acknowledging the business's name that maintains the site.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this came up because we used to have a landscaper that would take care of all the islands down in Beechmont Square, and now we have a different landscaper. So that landscaper that was taking care of the islands, they're not anymore. So there, I know there are many islands and green spaces in Revere that are being neglected. And I know the city, I know the city can't keep up with all of them. So I'm asking that maybe if I design a letter and give it to all the councilors, and they could send it to the businesses, and then we could offer, you know, if they clean up the islands or the green spots or whatever they are, the neglected spots, then, I mean, maybe we could make the city look better. And I know Bill Guanasso read my motion today, and he was in agreement and said he would help me. So I will design a letter and give it to every single council, ward counselor, and then you can reach out to the businesses that are near you, and maybe they can adopt an island. And with that, we can give them a green sign that says, "This island is taking care of whatever, Amazon." I don't see anything with Amazon out there. I see Murray's has a couple, there's a couple out there that people are taking care of, but we're losing the battle here, and we really need to start it up again. So I'm asking everybody to be on board with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great motion. The only thing that I think might help, and I don't know if it's possible, but is it, it would help if it is possible for us to get a list of the locations that are in need of this TLC, so that would be great.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you for the leeway. So most, some of these are owned by DCR, some of them are owned by Mass DOT, and some of them are owned by the city of Revere. I mean, in Beechmont, we're cut in three ways. We're cut up with DCR, we're cut up with Mass DOT, and Revere. This island that I'm talking about, it's a Meridian Strip, but it does have weeds and everything. That's owned by Mass DOT. They've never taken care of it. In the beginning, the Beechmont Improvement Committee took care of it, and then Jimmy McCurie, the landscaper, took care of it, but now no one takes care of it. So it's, we're in, we have different, you know, they're owned by different people, but they're not accountable for them. We're accountable for them. So that's what I'm asking, if we can just, to your answer, Counselor Kelly, that's what's going on.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 33, motion presented by Counselor Yarmio that the mayor direct the fire chief to conduct a cost and feasibility analysis to add a 24/7 emergency response ambulance and EMT responder to be housed under the police department.
Counselor Yarmio is not here this evening. Unless there's any opposition, I would like to table this to the next meeting. Tabled.
Calendar item number 34, motion presented by Counselor Argenzio that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to install speed bumps in the following locations, in the vicinity of 74 Yeeman Street and 130 Prospect Avenue.
This will get sent to the Traffic Commission. Counselor Argenzio?
Yes, that's fine, and I've already notified the Engineering Department so they can do an analysis to see if it's feasible and doesn't interrupt drainage.
Excellent. This is referred to the Traffic Commission.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 35, motion presented by Counselor Haas that the mayor request planning and community development to assess an ideal location for a skate park and to explore grant opportunities and partnerships to fund the installation.
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is something I saw recently when I was looking up local skate parks in that area. I saw that Chelsea had recently put in one last year, that they were able to partner with Adidas and the New England Revolution to, for equipment for their skate park. And back in the mid-'90s, Revere had a mini skate park at the Old Hill Park site. I'm pretty sure it was the mid-'90s, early-'90s, but we actually did have a skate park, and it was, it was pretty popular amongst the kids. And, you know, a skate park provides an inexpensive outlet, it promotes outdoor activity, promotes exercise and a sense of community, and... exercise and a sense of community, and a skate park in Revere would also keep us in step with our neighboring communities like Malden, who's had one since the early '90s, I think Winthrop, East Boston, and now our neighbor in Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 36, motion presented by Councilors Silvestri and McKenna that the mayor be requested to name the garden area where memorial bricks will be installed at Leach Park, the Chris Alba Remembrance Garden.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor McKenna, for going in on this motion. I'd actually like, if the whole council is willing, to put it in from the whole council.
Absolutely.
I think Chris made a huge impact in this area. That park itself, I know he's been called to 100 times to help with homeless residents that are living in the park and staying in the park. It's been a huge loss for the loss of Chris, and I think this is a memorial remembrance garden, small area of the park that could be dedicated to him to remember the work he's put in. Thank you.
Absolutely. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. I just want to give a little synopsis about me and Chris, our relationship. So, every time a resident would call me, because a homeless person would set up a tent across the street from the park, I would call Chris, or I would call Mark. So, I want to give Mark credit, too. And Chris or Mark would go down and talk to the homeless person, and then, and find out the story of why he was down there. I would always get a call from Chris telling me about the person. And, you know, sometimes we don't look at homeless people as people, but they all have stories. And he would always tell me the story of the homeless person and what happened to that homeless person, and, you know, and, but I always got a call from him. And then the next day, the person was gone. I don't know what he said to the person, or Mark, what Mark would say to the person, but the person was gone. It made me look good as a counselor because I got, that person, I don't want to say I got rid of the person, but that person would leave. Chris was really dedicated. It took me a while to really get to know him. He was a little standoffish at first, but once I got to know him, he was the best guy, dedicated, just sympathetic for the cause, and he really, really helped me a lot in Beachmont. So, I just want to say kudos to Mark for coming up with this. I know his wife, Nikki, said it, and then Mark called me, and we put it together. I just want people to know that there are two parks there now. There's the Leach Park on the left-hand side, and then there's the No Name Park, which we're going to call the Chris Alba Park. But I just want people to know that that's going to be two parks, and the Leach Park has every right to have that part of the park, and then the other part of the park, the beginning of the park, will be Chris Alba Park. So, I hope we can all come together with this because it's a great cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 37, motion presented by Counselor Kelly that the mayor request DCR to conduct a much-needed maintenance and repair of several issues on Revere Beach Boulevard, including but not limited to wall erosion and deteriorating lampposts that need painting.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the motion basically speaks for itself, but I just want to, I was getting a lot of calls from residents about the condition of the beach, and so didn't get to spend as much time down the beach this summer as I would have liked, but I did walk the entire beach to just check things out myself, and I was very disappointed when I walked the beach, especially from the Winthrop side to the Revere Street exit. The sidewalks, et cetera, are in need of a lot of TLC, and most importantly, the structural steel in the roofs of the pavilions are just completely rusted out. They look like they need to be sandblasted and repainted, and also even some of the pavilion support columns are actually decaying and look like they need immediate attention. So, I think if we could ask the DCR to provide for some long overdue maintenance on America's first public beach, it is absolutely needed, and I'm hoping that we can, the beach can get the attention and maintenance that it so well deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. So, I put this motion in about a year ago, and the council agreed that something should be done. The pavilions, the gazebos, the light posts are rotting. That's the legacy of, we don't have the roller coaster or anything anymore, but we still have the pavilions, we still have the gazebos, we still have the light posts, we still have that, I don't know, it's a lion that shoots water out. I mean, we still have historical, you know, I don't know what to call it, but anyways, we shouldn't lose that, and we're losing it. We're losing it. So, I agree with Counselor Kelly. We really need some money from the DCR to fix those. I know they were, I think this summer they were working on the gazebo's roof. I'm not 100% sure. The bandstand, yes, the bandstand. So, they were working on the roof of the bandstand because that was going to fall apart. But the structural surfaces are decaying, and our, we need, we need to keep our historical, give me landmarks. Thank you. I couldn't come up with the words. So, before they're gone, and now because of the, you know, the restaurants and the beach and everything, we're getting more visitors from other cities and towns and states. So, Revere is starting to become popular again, so I really think we really need to do this quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 38, motion presented by Counselor Kelly that the following zoning ordinance be ordered to a public hearing, an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere, repealing the definition and use of mechanical parking systems.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is going to go to a public hearing, but I'd like to be allowed just two minutes to give some background information. So, this ordinance was proposed and adopted in an attempt to create much-needed parking and to meet the City of Revere's building code for the requisite number of parking spaces for developments. So, we allowed these mechanical parking stackers in 2020. Since that time, I believe these stackers have been requested to be used in three apartment complexes that I'm aware of, 344 Salem Street, 810 Washington Ave., and 791 Broadway. 344 Salem Street was granted a variance from the zoning vote of appeals to reduce the number of required parking spaces and to install mechanical parking stackers. However, later, the developer requested relief from the ZBA from having to install the stackers at all, which was granted, and further reduced the number of originally agreed-to parking spaces from 50 down to 31. In a similar tactic now, just two months later, we're seeing that the developer of 810 Washington Ave. is attempting to do the exact same thing. The developer will be requesting relief from the ZBA later this week, on August 28th, from having to install its stackers as originally promised. And if said relief is granted by the ZBA, the number of parking spaces will be further reduced from 36 to 26. The third instance, 791 Broadway, I don't have any knowledge that as of yet they are asking for a request for relief, so I'll leave that one off the table for now. But what we can see is in two of the three instances so far, we're seeing a trend where these stackers are being promised upfront by the developers, only for them to subsequently request a waiver from the ZBA from having to install them at all. Therefore, instead of increasing parking, which was the exact intent behind the creation of this ordinance, we are ending up with the exact opposite, which is even fewer parking spaces actually being created. So, it seems that we have created a loophole and that we're defeating the purpose of this ordinance, and it really does seem like a type of little, like bait and switch tactic here. So, for these reasons, I'm requesting that we repeal the ordinance altogether and going forward prohibit the use of mechanical parking stackers in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kelly. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I fully agree with Counselor Kelly. I think that the mechanical stackers are sufficient for somewhere like New York City or Boston, a major city like that, but I do not think they're suitable for a city like Revere. I think when they're ran by a business or a company or someone that's facilitated to run them correctly, they can work, but when left to laypeople who are just moving their cars, they end up not using them at all, are high risk of injury. So, I think that the move for the city would be to ban the stackers totally, and I'm 100% with Counselor Kelly on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Based on what I've seen since I've been in here, I think it's a great motion from Counselor Kelly right now. I've heard nothing but complaints about the stackers themselves, the money it costs to repair, the money to put them in, and et cetera, and they're being repealed anyway, so I think it's a great motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, these locations are not in my ward, but I'm well aware of what's going on up at 810 Washington Ave., and from my information that I'm getting from folks is the neighbors didn't want it, and they don't, you know, there's a problem with parking because what happens is those machines break down a lot, and it takes an hour or so, if not more, to get a car down to the lower level. So, you know, I know the developer up there, and they had a session in the area this weekend, and the neighbors do not want them. They'd rather have less parking on their lot, but they want to make sure that any extra cars don't take over their street parking. So, I suggested to them that when they come in for their change, that the building not be given any more permit parking stickers for, in their lease, that they can't park their cars. So, that's, you know, that's what I'm doing down in my area, and it's working, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I love this motion that Counselor Kelly put in here. I agree with Counselor Novoseltsky. I think they're very, very dangerous, and it does take a long time for the cars to be brought down if they were on a higher level, and as far as the parking is concerned, they should not be granted any more parking permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambuto.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too support this motion wholeheartedly, and for a few reasons. I believe I'm guilty as one of the councilors that voted this ordinance in, and I'm not sure that we were, or, I'll speak for myself, that I educated myself enough before I went for this. I fell for the fact that it would help with the parking relief, and I didn't look into the, the fact that the, I think, I'm not sure who said it, but they certainly, it might have been Counselor Silvestri, but they certainly work in Boston and New York, and those are in instances, hotels and big buildings, where there's a dedicated crew that takes care of these safely. They're not for residential use, and that's why they're really, a small apartment building to have a nine-unit stacker or a 10-unit stack is a farce. They make too much noise, and in this instance on Washington Ave., there is no parking permits allowed there. It was part of the original permit, so they don't have permits. And, you know, the debate of whether 27 or 26 or 7 spots is good enough for 30 apartments when 15 of them are studios, you might make a case for that. But the bottom line is, they're not, they're not suited for residential use, and if I had it to do over again, I would have never voted that ordinance in. Hindsight's always 20/20, and we learn from our mistakes. So, I agree with Counselor Kelly's motion. It's a great motion, and I'd support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. So, I do want to, I did have a meeting with the residents of Sherman Street, the side street next to the 810 Washington Ave. development on Saturday morning at 10:30, and I didn't hear that from them, that they didn't want the mechanical stackers, but they were very concerned, even without there being parking permits being issued, that cars would inevitably end up on their street, which is already congested, which already sees a really huge amount of flooding, which they think is a result of this development. They said it was much worse after the development than previous. So, I don't know. They know that the ZBA hearing will be later this week, and I guess we can discuss it further at that time. And also, to Counselor Zambuto's point, it's not so much a matter of whether or not the parking will suffice without the mechanical stackers. I think it's more of that an initial promise was made by these developers when they're getting their permits to do the building, and then they're building the building, and then after the building is almost completed, then they're coming forward and saying, "Oh, yeah, guess what? We can't put these stackers in after all." And so, I think that's where my issue is, that if they're going to commit to it upfront and everybody was on board with it initially, they should be held to their promise of having to install them. That being said, I don't like them, and I think it's just opening up a can of worms in a loophole, and we should just, you know, from now on prohibit them from being allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. This is going to be referred to a public hearing on September 23rd.
Calendar item number 39, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the mayor request the city's policy writer and analyst, in conjunction with the police department and inspectional services, to draft an updated noise ordinance that is enforceable.
Counselor Garino Sawaya.
After speaking with about six different police officers during noise calls, it's come to my attention that they're really difficult to stop someone from having a massive party and the noise going on at like 9 o'clock. The police officers have actually told me that they have to look at the ground to see if the ground is shaken because it goes by decibels. It's insane, and something needs to be changed. So, if possible, I would like the city's policy writer to look into it and see if we can change the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
I, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say I love this motion, and I also had a couple of discussions with Chief Callahan around the challenges that the police face when trying to enforce these noise ordinances and trying to, you know, residents have a right to quiet enjoyment of their property, and there are a lot of situations in the city where the noise from a neighbor is just way over the top, and it would be nice if we could just get something that's enforceable on the books. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 40, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the city council order to a public hearing a zoning ordinance establishing definitions, uses, special permit district boundaries, and regulations for marijuana establishments in the City of Revere.
Counselor Silvestri.
I think it's going public hearing, and I'll save all my comments for that night. Thank you.
Public hearing on September 23rd.
Calendar item number 41, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya pursuant to Rule 46 of the City Council Rules of Order that the city council approve the installation of a portrait for Margaret P. Peggy O'Hara Shanahan in honor of her being the first woman to serve on the Revere City Council, appointed in 1973.
Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I'd like to send it to appointments.
Refer to Appointments and Recognition Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 42, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya pursuant to Rule 46 of the City Council Rules of Order that the city council approve the installation of a portrait for Elvira T. Vera Curcio in honor of her being the first woman elected to serve on the city council and the first woman to represent Ward III.
Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I'd also like to refer this one to Appointments, but I'd like to say it's about time a woman's picture goes up there. Thank you.
Refer to Appointments and Recognition. That concludes tonight's business. Thank you all for your participation, and everybody have a good night. This meeting is adjourned.